All right. Thank you, everyone, and welcome. I see it's six o'clock by my watch. I'd like to call to order this committee of the whole meeting and acknowledge that we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Coast Salish peoples. Just a special last-minute note from the chair regarding the passing of our council, of the Sook council member, Brenda Parkinson, who sadly passed away after a brief battle with cancer. And we'd like to acknowledge our sister council and recognize that we are all grieving with Sook at this moment. So I'm seeking approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Thank you, Gort. No second required. Thank you. And adoption of the minutes. Committee of the whole, June the 17th, 2019. Any errors or omissions? Anything?
Move approval. Adoption.
Thank you, Gort. Moved by Councilor Logan. Time for public participation. Sorry. I'd like to call the vote. Anybody opposed? Thank you. Carried. I figured you guys would help me along. Public participation. So just a caveat before public participation, that comments pertaining to a matter that has been the subject of a public hearing are prohibited where the bylaws related to that, to the matter have not been presented to council for consideration of adoption. I'd like to invite public to take this opportunity to comment on tonight's agenda items and advise if there are any other additional opportunities. Sorry, and there will be some other additional opportunities as we go through the agenda. And there'll be a final participation at the end of the meeting. Anybody have anything? Anybody? Seeing nothing, moving right along. Under new business, 5.1 Royal Bay Waterfront Passenger Ferry Pre-Feasibility Study. Anything from staff to add, other than what's been presented to council? This is the opportunity for the public to step forward if they have something they'd like counsel to hear on this matter. Go ahead, Niall. Yes?
Hello. Thank you very much. Niall Paltiel. I'm working with Seacliff Properties, the owner of the Royal Bay waterfront, now referred to as Royal Beach. Maybe in the future, we'll call it the Royal Beach Waterfront Pre-Feasibility Study for B.C. ferries. As I'm sure you're aware, Mayor, Mr. Chair and council, there was $250,000 that Seacliff Properties did contribute to the pre-feasibility study that was concluded and is attached in your agenda package. We acknowledge, though, that this is a B.C. ferries initiative. We're simply the land in which they're studying or reviewing placing the ferry terminal going into Victoria. We look at it right now as our job with working collaboratively with staff and the public and B.C. ferries to set in place a land use plan and zoning that facilitates a potential future infrastructure and work collaboratively or continue to work collaboratively with the, with the city and B.C. ferries to provide that. So the status right now that we have to report out as the Royal Beach property owners is we've reviewed the pre-feasibility study. We've offered to B.C. ferries in the province to contribute to a feasibility study if that was to be the next step in direction that, as that rolls out. And we'll continue to work with the city. And then we acknowledge as well that we don't have any, you know, design plans or anything at this point. It would be a series of ongoing studies and reviews and reports that would be required following a feasibility study if that is the direction that B.C. ferries decides to take. So I'm happy to listen to the discussion tonight, make notes, and if you have any other questions or comments, please don't hesitate. Thank you.
Thank you, Niall. And back to council. Anything from council? Go ahead, Michael.
Yeah, I think the idea of having a ferry to Victoria from our waterfront is very attractive. But as the study makes clear, there's an awful lot of things still need to be studied. They need to do further investigations such as effects on the lagoon and the peninsula. And I think that'll be a key issue, particularly for the city. And the ground conditions are still unknown. And the wind conditions stated in the report are still extremely preliminary. I note that they, they have only considered past data on wind speeds. And of course, wind speeds are expected to change. And we all know that the Professional Association of Engineers has told engineers that you can't just look at the past anymore. You've got to consider that the change is coming. Very hard to take that into account, but I'm sure that'll be the subject of a much more detailed study. And the city's got nothing to lose by carrying on studying it. But I do want to just sound some notes of caution. The ferry terminal as such and the bus parking will take about 40,000 square feet out of the waterfront. But the car parking will take 70,000 square feet. Now, that's 110,000 altogether. That's a big chunk out of the waterfront. And it's, it's not a very attractive chunk either, especially the parking. And I think we need to question, and I'm hoping that will be a subject of a staff report eventually during, in this whole process, which could be years, as to whether the effect on the ambience of the waterfront and the, the loss of property values around it, if any, and the loss of taxes, because parking doesn't pay much in the way of taxes. Neither the ferry terminals on the scale this one will be either. Bus parking doesn't pay much either. So while the ferry will, it'll probably absorb half a lane of traffic during rush hour. And that's, that's a benefit to the whole West Shore. But, but we need to know what cost to Callwood, because Callwood's the only one that's going to be losing tax revenue to do all the other improvements we want in the rest of the city. And I question if, if they're running probably two trips an hour over to Victoria, and they can carry 250 passengers per hour, actually 294 in the boat quoted, but I think they're thinking average 250. That parking lot will only hold half an hour's worth of traffic, and then it's full, because it'll probably be full first thing in the morning with people going to work. And then the short trippers got no parking. So we're going to be relying on buses virtually the rest of the day. So why do we need that parking lot for that half hour? Why didn't we just rely on buses? That's something worth thinking about. If the, if the parking, you know, was most of the traffic or even a quarter of the traffic, that would be great, but it's not. It's a tiny piece of the traffic and a huge amount of the space take. So that's just my notes of caution. But I'm glad, I'd be really glad to support this resolution. I think we should continue, do more thinking about it, but we've got to think about both sides of the issue.
Thank you. Anything from staff? First.
Mr. Chair, as noted in the staff recommendation, at this point, we're just looking for approval in principle from council. Subject to, as Councilor Baxter has pointed out, there's a lot more work and study that needs to go on, both with staff and also with B.C. ferries as well as the Royal Beach applicants. So we recognize that there's much more work to be done yet. We're simply looking for some indication whether we should keep on going.
Thanks, Dennis. Stuart, I thought you saw your hand up.
Thank you. I think, I think that to argue against a ferry would be like being against mother hen apple pie. I mean, it's, it's a great idea. It'd be wonderful. Parking may be an issue, although I think, you know, when this ferry comes, I'm going to hop on my, probably by then, electric bike from my place and scoot along the boardwalk and park my bike and head into town for a few drinks and come back. So it's, it's a good idea, but here's, here's where I'm coming from. I think that a pre-feasibility study, I'm actually stunned to hear that the costs that have been quoted tonight for pre-feasibility study. And I obviously wasn't charging enough when I was in business, because there's not much in the report. Just checking if you're awake, Jim. You know, you read the report, and, and, and there's some, some good stuff in it and some stuff that's way, way beyond my expertise. I get that. But they talk about the rock in the quarry. It's almost like it hadn't been ever reviewed by anybody who understood the site or knew the site. I mean, the rock quarry is, you know, hundreds of meters from the foreshore, and then, you know, they're concerned about the rock in some ways good, some ways bad. They talk about the problems with dredging perhaps for the, for the berths, and yet, you know, we're desperately looking for sand to put on our beach to, to protect its lifestyle. So again, one would think there might be some synergies there, which, which didn't even make, make the report. You know, they sort of come up with numbers that say, well, you know, we think we can do it for $5.70 a ride. But somebody's going to, you know, is this a separate ride from the bus? So you'd be taking the bus and paying for a bus pass and then paying for the ferry? They're talking about, yeah, we don't think the land's going to cost very much for, at either end. And, you know, I suspect that the people who bought that land might think differently. They just paid a bunch of money for it. They may, they may not want to give it away. Maybe they do. I don't know. We'll have to see. So, so those things concern me. They talk about having two people to operate these boats. We all know we ride the ferries, and they're just chock-a-block full of floating restaurants because they need that many staff on the boat in case there's an emergency mandated. So they haven't even drilled down to, is this equivalent to the Seabus, which has four people apparently and crosses Burrard Inlet? Or is this more like a ferry in open waters with their staffing requirements? So there's just so, so many things. What is the cost? I mean, even if we were to say, you know, maybe it's not 5.70, it's much more likely double that. Is that unrealistic? The numbers that we heard when the West Coast Express was first built were that it was, every ride was subsidized for $210 or $15. So perhaps people in the ferries or in transit understand the cost of these subsidies, and they don't, they don't scare them off. There's, there's a whole, whole bunch of work to be done. And yet, in Callwood here, we're looking at, we have this proposal for, for rezoning Royal Bay from Gablecraft for the Royal Beach. There's other property in South Callwood and South Langford looking to develop. I think, I think if I read it correctly, and I, maybe I can't pull it up quickly enough, they talk about, you know, the next steps of this will be pending the South Island Transportation Plan completion. If that's the case, you know, surely this should be part of the South Island Transportation Plan? Do we go and study the heck out of all the potential roads and, and, and options for transportation and finish him and say, okay, here's what we need to do to move these many people? And then add a ferry in? Or is the ferry part of, here's how we're going to move this many people? And, and if we don't know the answer to that, how do, how do we give guidance to, to people like Royal Beach and Royal Bay who are looking at adding density to their lands, which, which, you know, council may or may not support? But I certainly don't think council will support it unless we can see that the infrastructure is required to be there. And if, if we can't answer a simple question like, you know, are people traveling by ferry or by car? How can we get the right size of our roads? And I know there, I know that, as, as Michael's referred to, and I think the planner refers to, and others have referred, there's, you know, by the time you get from a pre-feasibility study all the way to let's build it, it's, it's many years and many, many dollars. And yet, we're not, I don't think we can say to these developers, well, yep, we might have a ferry, and you may not have to build as many roads, so just hang on until somebody makes a decision, you know, several years and probably several different governments down the road. I think, I'm going to suggest that we, we pause on this here and just go and ask some of the people who can give us some guidance here, like, like transit and ferries. What is this, what is the likely subsidy on this thing? Is it going to be $6 or $8 or $10 a ride? Or is it going to be, you know, down to the cost of a bus, and somebody's going to pick up the difference? What, how many people are going to be need to operate in? There are some things that could perhaps at least give us guidance, so we have some, some confidence that this is a real scheme? Or is this something somebody threw together to satisfy some politician who said, I need a report about this or that or the next thing, and was, you know, done off the side of somebody's desk without, I mean, you know, where's, where's, where's the, where's, where's the ownership of, of, of the reality of this report, a pre-feasibility report? You know, is somebody saying, I've done this pre-feasibility report. I now understand it well enough to say, you know, it will work, it can work, and these numbers are real. It's just, yeah, it looks like maybe it'll work, and maybe it'll cost as much if some of these things are true, and if they're not, it's going to change. I don't think there's enough there to, there's not enough there to allow us to proceed with confidence on, on addressing the issues that need to be addressed as we deal with these rezoning applications over the next year or two. So I honestly think that, that to pass a motion now to say, great, we'd be all in favor of it, doesn't help anybody. And I think we should be trying to drill down and get some of those answers before we take it seriously.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think one thing is for sure, that, you know, the status quo is not acceptable, and there's only so much that we can funnel down the, the one route out of the West Shore. So being creative is, is, is almost a requirement if, if we're going to continue to grow. So I, I'm actually quite enthusiastic about the, the prospect of an alternative from the West Shore like ferries. And I, I think what brings me a little bit of hope here, and not getting into the weeds, because I, you know, I think that when more studies are done, we'll, we'll get more answers in terms of erosion and, and all that jazz. But, but what gives me a little bit of hope is that we're not talking about a fly-by-night company here. We're talking about a significant corporation like B.C. ferries that has identified an interest. So that, that gives me some hope that there's some reality here. My biggest concern, and Michael touched on it as well, is the planning aspect and the treatment of the, of the waterfront portion of the property. That is going to be absolutely crucial. In fact, I, you know, I would probably rate that more of a priority than the actual ferry itself, because we, we, we only get one chance to do that. And, and certainly the planning aspect will have not only an impact, a positive impact on Royal Beach itself by being a draw, if it's done right, but also Royal Bay and the surrounding, the West Shore as, as a draw to bring people out here to service our, our small businesses and whatnot. So, you know, I, I, I think we need to move forward. And as, as, this is really the only viable alternative or creative alternative that we've seen to date to, to, to move traffic. So until we study a, a little bit more, we won't know those answers. So I, I will be supporting the staff recommendation, Mr. Chair, and I'm happy to make the motion when it's appropriate.
Counselor Day.
Thank you. I appreciate all the comments around the table. I definitely have some reservations about it, particularly the impacts that the massive parking facility could have on our waterfront. So I, I agree with the comments from all members of council about that we, we do really need to know. I'm optimistic because it is part of a South Vancouver Island transportation strategy, because I think that is really important. And I, I really feel strongly that it needs to be more integrated with our transit system than with our car infrastructure. Because based on what I've read in the executive summary, there, there is a high likelihood of it fitting better with buses than it really does with cars, for a couple of reasons. One, because the cars, as Councilor Parkinson said, he might get on his e-bike and ride over there, go downtown, have a few drinks, come back. But if you're in a car, that's, maybe it's coffee. I don't know. No judgment. But it also has a potential really big impact, not only on our waterfront, but also on the infrastructure that's through that whole La Torre Valley, McChosen Road. And some of the numbers, I know they're going to be fleshed out, but there has been quite a few concerns about the numbers that the CRD uses versus the numbers that we used for our OCP. There seems to be some discrepancy in what I read. I'm sure they'll get sorted out in the next level of report. I am happy to continue looking at this. So I will support the motion that's been put forward. But I hope that we're looking at it from a perspective of how can this enhance our regional transportation services, which to me means buses. And when this is probably going to make the most sense is going to be at peak rush hour. So the financial side of thing has more than one impact, including on our economic development. Because if you can catch the ferry for the same price as a bus and go downtown, why would you go to a restaurant out here? So that is a potential downside to being more connected with, with the downtown core. But it also needs to be looked at from the point of view of if the provincial government is the one footing the bill for this, and they're investing $41,600,000 to serve 4,000 passengers on this ferry, what would that do to the transit system if we had that sort of investment? So I do think that it's, it's potentially very exciting and really wonderful, and also potentially problematic. If, if this is a car-centric option, then that could just create more problems. I'm really looking forward to the report coming back with a lot more technical information about the breakwaters, because that has a potential to have really big environmental impacts on Esquimalt Lagoon, Albert Head Lagoon, the forage fish, eel grass beds that are also associated with that same waterfront area. So I think we need to be really careful that any breakwater that's put out there isn't going to have huge unintended consequences that would be detrimental to our waterfront. So there's a whole lot that we don't know yet, and I'm certainly on board to hear more and learn more. But I think there's potential transportation issues in Callwood, parking issues in Callwood, and environmental impacts that we might not have all the information on, and we need to be really careful about that.
I see Stuart has his hand up again. Go ahead.
If, if, if I may, and I think, I think listening to the, the other councillors, it really does, does make my point, is, is that we don't really understand what we're saying or doing here. We all have visions, and we all think things, and we all would like to believe it's going to be this. I guess my first thought was the people from Victoria were going to hop on ferries to come out for dinner here instead of the other way around. But, but you know, what, what the report, what says is, staff, the study recommends further investigation regarding funding options, vessel design, environmental impact, including shoreline erosion, potential off-peak travel demand. All great stuff to know. Staff have been advised that this work is pending the completion of the South Island Transportation Plan currently undertaken by the Ministry of Transportation and Infrastructure. Well, you know, Counselor Day, you were talking about, isn't it great? They're going to look at all this, and this is going to be part of it. The report says completely opposite. It says they're going to do this report on the South Island Transportation, and then when it's done, they'll start to look, they'll pick up this file and start to look at the ferry again. I mean, it's not being included as part of that. If that's the case, then I think this council is going to be faced with developers saying, we can't wait forever. We want to develop, we want to rezone council again. You may or may not agree with that. But if we agree with that, one of the things we're going to have to say is, well, then build the roads like everybody's on the road, because we don't know if there's going to be a ferry. And, you know, we're getting them to spend money that could probably be, go to better, more fruitful places. So what I'm suggesting is that we don't, we don't just pass this motion and say, good, that was nice, let's go. We say, here's some real holes in the, in the, in the data that we're going to need to address these rezoning applications in a timely manner. And how do we get that? Or how do we get comfort on those things that this is real? You know? It's, it's, sure, we'd all love it. I think, I think a ferry, myself, if it's, you know, brought to the cost of riding a bus, taking a ferry, what's wrong with that? Sounds great. But is it realistic? Or are we, or are we just, you know, what if we got ourselves in a situation where people are saying, we don't want to build the roads because there's going to be a ferry? They don't build the roads. There isn't a ferry. We've got ourselves in a real jam. So if, if we're looking forward at being responsible here with dealing with these issues as they arise, I don't think we can just say, yeah, somebody will look at a ferry someday, and, you know, we'll worry about it then. I don't, I just don't think that's the right approach. And I think that we can go and ask some hard, pointed questions at people like B.C. Transit, the provincial government, you know, the ferry corporation, and, and try to home in on how real do we think this is before we go any further? That's my, that's my take on it.
Thank you, Stuart. Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll move the staff recommendation.
Thank you. We have a mover. Any final discussion? Just to sum up, there's been lots of great discussion here. I do believe there are, there's much work to be done, and I think we've identified a lot of that. And I know Dennis has rapidly been making notes. But I do believe this is a significant opportunity in our community, and it does need to be fully explored. And I can say without reservation that it, it is something that thoroughly resonates with our public. So it does behoove us to explore this to its fullest potential. And if, if we decide that it doesn't work for our community, then I think that we will have to have some, some real cogent reasons as far as an explanation goes, and whether, and why it doesn't work. So without further ado, Counselor Day, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if some of the concerns that Counselor Parkinson raised should be added to the motion to perhaps ask the government? Because in my reading of this, I understood it was being considered in conjunction with the South Vancouver Island Transportation Study. So I, I respect Counselor Parkinson's ability to read through these reports and come up with good information. So if that's not the case, maybe we should add to our recommendation that we request that the province consider it in conjunction with that plan.
I think that if we can turn to staff, because I do believe that a lot of this will, my understanding is that this will form part of the, the investigation that is going to be undertaken. It just may not be explicitly.
That's, that's correct, Mr. Chair. What, I'd take your point, Counselor Day, that, that is something that we would also need to consider. If I may suggest, as we've said in the staff recommendation, we're simply looking for some indication from council, whether in principle you support the idea of passenger ferry terminal at this location, given that there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. For example, how does this integrate with the South Island Transportation Study? What is the costing mechanism? And all those things that council has brought up tonight. Those will all be compiled back into staff reports that we brought back to council for your consideration.
Thank you, Dennis.
And so they've all been noted, but I will leave that to you.
And if, if I could just add to my take on it for staff's clarification, I would like to see a comparison of what the money put into the ferry could do for transit. If, if, if the ferry isn't an option that's chosen, what, what, how would, could we improve transit to be more, yeah, how many buses could you buy with your $41.5 million to, to increase the service on our bus system, which, you know, many areas... to increase the service on our bus system, which, you know, many areas of Langford and Callwood are both served by buses that may run only once an hour. So the, every time I've looked at BC Transit for their planning, they're trying to reach the magic number of having a bus every fifteen minutes, which makes it far more likely that people are to be able to utilize that system.
Counselor Parkinson, go ahead.
Sorry, your acting worship. But I fail to see how we have any input here at all. I mean, you know, Counselor Day's suggestion was to say, let's ask for it to be in the South Island Transportation Plan. But again, I stress that this is critical for the growth of our community. We sit around and talk about, well, we would love it to be beautiful down on Royal Beach, and we want the restaurants, and we want the ambiance, and we want all this kind of stuff. How the hell do we make a decision about what kind of zoning we should, pardon my French, how do we make a decision about how, what should go forward in the way of zoning and what shouldn't, with this hanging out there with, on a program that looks to me like it's many years to come to conclusion? I mean, at some point, we're going to have to go, we think there may be a ferry, we think there may not. We're going to have to make a gut call and go with it. But we just have very, very little information, and to me, to my mind, no indication that anybody out there is doing anything about it. And frankly, our staff can't do ferry studies and stuff like that. So how do we motivate BC ferries and transit in the province to at least take it far enough that we can make intelligent decisions regarding the rezonings that are in our face right now?
I see Mr. CAO has his hand up.
Mr. Chairman, to the rest of council, I can confirm that this ferry system is in the South Island Transportation Strategy. They are looking at it. They have a technical committee that's meeting four times before they release their report. So there will be a lot of this kind of information that will come forward at that time. I do highly recommend that council pass the motion as set by staff, because all it is doing is it's in principle waiting for more information.
Thank you, Mr. CAO. So if I can call the vote, please. All those in favor? And all those opposed? Counselor Parkinson opposes. And the motion passes. Thank you very much. Welcome back, Stuart. All right. Next item on the agenda is 5.2. It's a policy pertaining to our flags. If you've all read the report, apparently there has been no policy up till now, so this will be the birth of a policy, is what I'm led to understand. Madam Corporate Officer, anything to add?
No, nothing since the report was presented. But just to reaffirm that we did consult with the Fire Chiefs Association, the province, and Canadian Heritage to make sure that we were following their protocols and practices.
Any comments from the public at all? Seeing none, anything at council? Counselor Parkinson?
Just wasn't clear whether flying flags at half-mast, it says a past or present prime minister or federal cabinet minister. That would be an active federal cabinet minister, not anyone who at every time served in cabinet? So if it's past or present, that could be an awful lot of people, couldn't it? I don't know how many people are alive today who were at one point in cabinet, but it's probably in the hundreds. So it could be either ten or fifteen times a day. If, I would propose a modification to say a past or present prime minister, or a current federal cabinet minister?
I'd second that. I think you just proposed an amendment, didn't you?
I did.
Yeah.
Just to make things complicated, thank Stuart. Okay.
I think we're about to be told you can't amend something that hasn't been.
Do we need a resolution for that?
Yes.
Okay. So the, did you get that at all? Amanda has it already. So just on the amendment itself, any discussion? So the amendment, as I understand it, is current or active cabinet ministers? Is that currently elected? Federal cabinet ministers?
Just to clarify, it's past and present prime ministers, but only current cabinet ministers.
Correct.
Well, current before they passed on, anyway.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of the amendment? Here, the amendment passes. Somebody move the recommendation? Thank you, Counselor, thank you, Counselor Parkinson moves the recommendation as amended. Get that, Amanda? And...
Second.
We don't need a second.
I'm seconding it.
We don't need a second, no?
You don't need a second. We're in committee. You don't need a second.
Have we not been through this already? It's like, trying to mess me up, aren't you? So all those in favor, thank you. The recommendation passes. And we're back to the final participation of the public. There we go, number six. Anything final from the public at all? Step forward, sir, if you could give us your name and address, that'd be great.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is David Bennett. I'm at Unit 203-591 La Toria Road. I've worked in the West Shore since nineteen seventy-eight, and I've lived and worked in Sook since nineteen ninety. And since mid-January, I've become a resident of Callwood, hence my appearance here. I apologize for the casual attire, but summer is coming back. Am I able to comment on the ferry?
You can speak to anything on the agenda, or...
Just from my, you know, humble perspective as a graying senior, I would prefer to see a feeder network of park and rides providing bus routes to the ferry. I'm a strong advocate for that passenger ferry, but I don't want to see it to Rossin Terminal down on Royal Beach. We have to make it worthwhile for people to get out of their cars. And whether other more senior levels of government have to subsidize that fair to get people out of their cars and then onto that ferry, then that's a possible avenue to pursue. Given what's been already mentioned, I would strongly recommend also storage or facilities for bicycles and scooters and so on, alternative methods of transportation. As a recent resident to Callwood and living on La Toria, I'm very cognizant of the pressures that are already on what I would call the La Toria Corridor, from Royal Beach to Happy Valley Road. I know it crosses multiple jurisdictions. I would encourage any of you in the new school year to park, for example, on Besenton Way, and watch the cars heading west from Royal Bay Secondary. And secondly, at the end of the school day, heading west from Royal Bay Secondary. There is a school planned for Olympic View Development, which is right beside my building. And there's also a second school, as you know, planned for the gravel pits. So the traffic congestion is going to increase. And most of those parents obviously don't want to have their children bust. The housing density is quite frightening along that La Toria Corridor. And there's still some big parcels of land left to be developed. And there's going to be a continuing supply or need for concrete and lumber. As a very old-fashioned person, I would prefer three roundabouts at those specific intersections, Happy Valley, La Toria, and Machosen Road. But the mechanics or whatever may not allow that. But for me, it does speak to an incredible amount of networking that has to take place between these very developers along that route, because the congestion on that infrastructure is going to be mind-boggling. And speaking very personally, but I think on behalf of several hundred residents in the La Toria Corridor, but in particular on the Veterans Way Parkway Corridor, the stretch from Sook Road to La Toria is being used for individual time trials, for tire testing, little or no mufflers, and muscle cars to dirt bikes and motorcycles exercising what they feel is their right to do that. This can occur twenty-four seven, anytime. And I can start to document it if you wish. I'm very cognizant of the restraints placed on the RCMP in terms of what they can do. I went to the RCMP detachment last week, spoke to one of the civilian staff members, and I believe she identified one member of the Traffic Patrol who has the West Shore area to monitor. Having marked cars there will not solve the problem, because gosh, the headlight telegraph takes over and everybody, you know, behaves themselves. And I realize that speed bumps are not able to be placed on Veterans Way for a variety of reasons. But if there's any way of encouraging unmarked vehicles from Ursu or the RCMP to patrol from Sook Road right to La Toria, because they have tire marks on the north side of Veterans Way going towards Sook Road as well. But it's a regular occurrence, and I'm not sure that certain people choose that route for that delight. But anyway, just to let you know. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. And you've touched on a lot of subjects, and several of those are very much live issues for this council. In fact, that traffic in that area is extensively discussed just a couple of meetings back, and the coordination that's going to be required. So you're very much on point.
I don't expect a drop in the noise level tomorrow morning, but whatever can be done, I'd be very much appreciative. And I know all the homes, you know, the Red Barn condo building and so on, all those bedrooms facing there. And if you went and did a visual inspection, there's tire marks everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next committee meeting is scheduled for August the nineteenth at 6:00 PM. Must be the summer break. And look for... Do the German. Thank you, Counselor Logan. And no second or required. All in favor of a German? Thank you.